They're leaving. Okay, one, two, three, we got a quorum. Um, we do have a quorum and it is 5:00 PM. So I would like to call to order the meeting of the City Commission of West Palm Beach. Um, and today is February 7th and the time is 5:00 PM. Uh, we will start this meeting off as we always do with a moment of silence. Keep in mind that the number of deaths from, uh, the coronavirus is still creeping upwards and, uh, I, I never want the scope of those numbers to minimize the scope of the sadness caused by the loss of a loved one from this disease. So a moment of silence, you might want to keep those folks in mind. Mr. President, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum. Um, officials shall be recognized by the chair and shall not interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience and stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Uh, and masks are required as long as you are in the chambers, uh, for this meeting. And, uh, any offenders to the foregoing may be removed from the meeting. Please govern yourselves accordingly. Uh, Ms. Johnson, are there any additions, leishens, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to just draw to the board's attention, we do have two items, uh, that are going to be requested for continuance when we get to those items. Uh, but in terms of reordering the agenda, we do have, uh, a request, uh, to move item 9.2, which is a public hearing related to ordinance number 4989-22, donation of land to the University of Florida. We do have the university's president, uh, in the audience with us and he has some time constraints. So I'm asking the board to, uh, approve moving that item up.
And where would you like to move it?
Uh, at the pleasure of the board, we can do it either before the consent or immediately after the consent calendar.
Uh, why don't we do it, um, right after consent? Okay?
That would be fine, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
9.2. Okay, very good. Any other changes, reorganization?
No other changes.
All right. Uh, I do have a proclamation, uh, to make, uh, with respect to 211. Um, the representatives here, okay. Uh, the proclamation recognizes, uh, February 11th through 17th is 211 Awareness Week. And, uh, Patrice Schroeder, Schro- Schroeder, uh, who is the 211 Helpline Community Relations Specialist will be accepting that. Uh, I urge all citizens to beware that if they are overwhelmed, uh, and in crisis or just need to talk, 211 is available at any time of day or night. 211 staff can also provide referrals for mental health counseling, substance abuse, healthcare, employment, food assistance, daycare, support groups, volunteering, VITA free, and VITA free income tax preparation, and I believe there are probably other services. So, uh, I will come down with the proclamation and, uh, we'll take a couple of pictures.
Thank you, Mayor James. Can the commission, um, appreciate you supporting this initiative, um, pretty much every year since we've been doing that. I think West Palm Beach has been very supportive. I just want, for those of you that aren't familiar, 211 is your local community helpline and crisis hotline. So we are here 24/7, anytime of day or night. We average about 275 calls per day and of that, 10 on average are crisis. Last year, we answered over 100,000 calls with people expressing 139,000 needs. Of those needs, the highest need is that was that for mental health and addictions. There were 46,000 individuals reaching out with that need. Of that, 3,800, 3,800 were suicide concerns. I just want to express again with, in light of the recent tragedies, the high-profile suicides, Chesley Christ and others, just the importance of people knowing that 211 is here 20, 24/7, anytime of day or night. And I encourage people in the audience and in the wider community, if you're concerned about somebody, trust your gut instinct and act upon it. You may save a life. Reach out and help on their behalf. It's very important. The second highest need we had were, um, housing. We had 26,000 individuals that were struggling with affordable housing. Some of the calls that we were getting, basically a family living out of their car. Where do I take my kids to go to the bathroom? Where can we go get a shower? So now we have families that are trying to struggle and, and do their nine-to-five job while taking care of their kids living out of their cars. I've, we had a caller call in, it was a single mom. My rent was raised $800. Now it's $2,400, $100, it's just me and my child. I can't afford that. And I know the Florida Weekly did a lovely piece, if you hadn't a chance to see it. To be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment, you need $28 an hour was what they came up with. A one-bedroom, above $20 an hour. So these are the needs we're hearing about. I also had this weekend, um, I stopped by a local eatery and saw a young student doing her homework on her computer. She was dual-enrolled, she was going to high school at the same time going to the college. And I just started chatting with her and she was mentioning that at her school, they'd already had five suicides, students that had lost their life to suicide. So I really encourage you to really go viral with this information, get it out in any way that you can. You know, it's just so, so important and we can make a difference. Of course, we're helping people find those food pantries, we're helping them find the assistance with employment, we're helping them to find the free clinics and the legal help. So obviously, we want to get people to legal aid to help them prevent foreclosures or evictions if at all possible and also to possibly have mediation with their landlords. So it's, it's crucial. And 211, as you heard in the proclamation, we have a lot of other programming. One of the key pieces right now, we know that a lot of the caregivers are isolated. Uh, that was a finding with the CDC, the minorities, caregivers, uh, middle-aged, I guess it was young adults and we're having a struggle with the, the pandemic. The CDC acknowledged that there were three big waves. The first wave was the actual pandemic with the health crisis. The second wave was the economic crisis. The third, much bigger wave, which we are experiencing now, is that mental health crisis. So everybody, I encourage you to do self-care. I encourage, help your, your family, your loved ones, the people you know, build resilience. How do we stay resilient in the times of these difficult challenges? But at any rate, we do a caregiver project where we're helping those caregivers that are isolated. We can give them a daily call to check in on them as well to see how they're doing. Seniors, our Sunshine Program, again, we can continue those calls to those seniors, helping them to stay connected, which has been so critical right now. Um, we also have a program by Florida Vet, should you know military veteran or their family, that we can provide services for both, not only the veteran, that peer-to-peer support, but also for their loved ones and their families. And then, of course, helping children, we have that Help Me Grow Initiative, helping children, families can get their growth developmental screen screenings done over the phone and the behavioral health screening as well, because it's key to catch those mental health, behavioral health situations early so that we can really improve their lives and also our special needs helpline. Um, so I want to thank you for allowing me this moment and, um, I appreciate your, your efforts and support on our behalf and let's work as a community to get to the bottom of some of these concerns.
Thank you very much and thank you for all that you all do for our community. Thank you so much. Okay, um, consent calendar, item 7.1 through 7.3. 7.3. We have no cards? I don't hear any comments, questions, anything on the portal? Okay, I'll, uh, hearing no further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of the consent calendar.
Uh, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign, hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move to item 9.2. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 4989-22 approving donation of certain property in the downtowns of the University of Florida for development of an urban campus. Adam City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners Kimberly Rothenberg, here to present this evening ordinance number 4989-22. And if you will recall, back in August of last year, this board adopted, uh, resolution number 235-21, which in essence, um, the property outlined and read was declared not to be needed for city purposes. It was also declared surplus and it authorized, uh, my office to get in touch with the University of Florida and University of Florida Foundation to negotiate a conveyance agreement and that's what we've done and that's what we're here to talk about this evening. So in essence, ordinance 4989-22 finds that the, um, donation of the property for development of an urban campus serves a public purpose. It approves the conveyance of the property by special warranty deed, waives interest in phosphate minerals and other metals and petroleum that are found on the property. It acknowledges an intent to abandon some alleyways within the property. It also approves execution of agreement of the conveyance agreement itself and any ancillary documents that are necessary to effectuate the transaction. This with, like all ordinances that approve a transfer of property requires a four-fifth vote, either first or second reading, and it also takes effect 31 days after the second reading if no one challenges the conveyance. So some of the major terms that, um, put in some protections in place for the city in this conveyance agreement is there's two things. First, prior to closing, the university will have to get all approvals that are necessary to make the agreement itself a valid and binding agreement. It also requires that the University of Florida acquire 1.5 acres of additional third-party owned property that's necessary to develop the urban campus together with the city's property. And that property was the properties that were outlined in purple and it's about 10 acres total of various, um, property owners. So the, uh, conveyance agreement itself also includes four additional types of protections for the city. There are use restrictions, reverter, uh, restraint, restraints on alienation and surplus provisions that provide those protections. The first thing we're going to talk about are the use restrictions. The property itself is restricted to a limited use, which is defined as the urban campus use. That involves three things. It can be used for educational, incidental support facilities and public-private facilities. And we're going to talk about each one of those things individually. So facilities and improvements. I'm sorry, hold on a second, the mouse is not working here. All right. So the university of campus educational component of the project requires facilities and improvements that are necessary to house the classes that are proposed, like graduate, postgraduate, professional, executive programs, courses and certificate programs, internships, research, clinical uses. It also allows for incidental uses that support the educational component like bookstores, um, administrative offices, food service facilities, recreation facilities. The final component is this ability to use a portion of the campus property for public-private uses. These uses have to be complementary to or support the function of the urban campus use itself. Things like civic space, housing, office or retail, but keep in mind, the office has to support the educational component. It would be likely to companies that are providing internships or other, um, work experiences for the students at the university itself. Another protection that we included was that the private uses couldn't exceed 50% of the total floor area ratio of the buildings that were constructed on the property. So you are assured that at least 50% of the buildings that are constructed are 100% educational or those incidental supportive uses. The urban campus uses also require that at all times, they're active uses. So those facilities that are in use will be regularly operating with activity at the site. Additional protections include a reverter clause. The reverter clause would kick in if there's no construction contract, no building permit or vertical construction commenced within five years from the date of conveyance. The restraint on alienation in essence prohibits the transfer of the property, uh, without the permission of the city to third parties. And then we also have a surplus provision that after 10 years, the university will in their master planning look at the property. If any portion of the property's not been developed, it will look at that property. If it's not included within the master plan for future development for the urban campus uses, it will be reconveyed back to the city and declared, uh, surplus by the university. Couple of additional considerations that we touched on when I first started was the consent to alley abandonment. That would only happen if, uh, some of the utilities include Florida Power and Light Utilities, so Florida Power and Light would have to agree. The city utilities would have to be able to be relocated, um, at no cost to the city or that the city could maintain those utilities in their current location with the appropriate easements. And we already touched on the waiver of the mineral rights. So what I have in front of you is a timeline, the dates on this timeline are the, uh, the outside dates. So, um, these are the latest that things can occur. So you're looking at vertical construction on or before, 4/4/29, assuming that second reading occurs on the 22nd of February in 31 days without, um, any challenge goes by. If you have no questions for me, I would like to have a moment to, uh, let President Fox come and say a few words.
Absolutely. Welcome again, President Fox.
Thank you, Mayor James and Commissioners. I just have, uh, two brief messages I wanted to convey. First is, uh, just the, uh, sense of, um, excitement and enthusiasm that we have received from this community, uh, from the leadership, from you all, and from the business community as we've interacted with them since my last time here. And, uh, we have made a lot of progress in engaging with the state, uh, asking them for support in this current budget cycle, a lot of progress in working with donors that will donate to this campus and in this, uh, first phase of, of the development and also in, uh, the business community and developing the programs that, that'll be offered. And then my, my second message, just one of gratitude, uh, how you all have received us with open arms, um, Mayor James and all of you, uh, on the commission. So thank you all. Uh, we're just, uh, even more committed than we were when I first met with you all. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you for taking time out to, to, to join us this evening. Any questions for, uh, staff, Adam City Attorney, Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, um, Adam City Attorney. I had a question on slide number six, if we could take a look at that. I, I'm very supportive of moving this forward and I think this is an important step in making sure that we are documenting kind of each of our intents. So I understand in an urban use campus, there's going to be a need for coffee shops and certain retail locations that are kind of amenities to students and faculty, et cetera. Um, and, and I think that's the intent behind here. How do we safeguard future uses so that, as I understand, office has to relate to the urban campus use, retail has to relate to the urban campus use? What is the definition around that? Is part of the urban campus use would be maybe a, a campus store for certain, but what's the differentiation between opening a campus store on the site and opening a retail clothing store?
Well, it's broadly defined so that there is some flexibility for the state of Florida to be able to use what the state of Florida's put in place of these, these public-private partnerships. The only, and the reason for doing that is to open up funding opportunities and to enable a project that may not otherwise be financially feasible to do, to get done. So the only conditions or restraints that we have on the public-private portion is that those, um, private enterprises have to be supportive of, supportive of urban campus and needed within an urban campus. So, um, could an additional restaurant or cafe be supportive of an urban campus use? Yes, it could. Those are broadly defined. We may have another opportunity to take a look at some of the uses when we, um, talk with the University of Florida and when you get far enough down the road and have to enter into the exact development agreement, but as it relates to the conveyance agreement itself, it's, it's left broadly enough so that the University of Florida has the tools that they need in order to fund the project.
So to clarify what you said there too, you know, certainly I, I know there has to be broad terms and those get narrowed down at various steps, but I, I think I want to be clear that we have the, who determines the definition of what is needed for an urban campus so that at some point, definition of an urban campus doesn't involve making sure there's an Apple Store next to a Starbucks, next to, uh, a clothing line store, so that essentially it becomes a, a retail space? And again, I know the University of Florida has plenty of things they'd like to use that space for. This is just the devil's in the details of how we're structuring this agreement.
Other than tying it back to the fact that it has to be, um, contemplated by and supportive of an urban campus, which is the educational component, that's the only parameter in the conveyance agreement that we included. There's also a section in the conveyance agreement that talks about public-private partnerships and, and what those are. You know, there, it specifically spells out that there's a need for new educational facilities in the state. The states recognize that public-private partnerships are used to construct educational, um, facilities that can improve delivery, lower costs, and provide other public benefits. Um, they go on to talk about, uh, a little bit, but not specifically as to what those public-private partnerships are going to be, because they don't have public-private partnerships at this moment.
Sure. So who determines what is appropriate for, for an urban use on campus and at what time do they determine that?
It's going to be at the time that they sit down at the table with the folks who are interested in, um, entering into these, uh, agreements with the University of Florida. And the University of Florida will look and see, are these the type of uses that are consistent with the University of Florida's mission and that will support and be part of the urban campus fiber to provide support for students and things that the students may need.
So just one last point of clarification, post-conveyance, the city has no more interaction in that decision?
Like I said, there is a process whereby the master planning that will be done by the university is a public, um, it's a public function that requires, uh, three, at least three public meetings pursuant to statute. Following the master planning, there's also a time when the university will work with the city of West Palm Beach and, and create development agreements and that too will be a public process that will require additional public input and participation. So those are two additional times that we'll talk about what specifically is going to happen at the property.
On a case-by-case basis, those are the, the kind of entryways into the process in which the public can give input as to use and et cetera. Okay, thank you.
Uh, and at the, um, under no circumstances shall the private uses exceed 50% of the floor area.
Correct.
Of all the buildings on our property, correct? On the city's property?
Absolutely not. That's what the agreement specifically calls that out. And, and the university's going to want to make sure that they have enough educational component to make sure that their university, their campus works.
Okay, very good. Any, uh, Commissioner Warren?
I have a couple of questions. The housing component, do, do we have an idea of what that looks like bearing, bearing in mind that housing is so short, uh, and the supply is so limited? Is, will that be inclusive of the faculty and, as well as the students? Do we, no?
Again, I don't know that there's specific plans that are spelled out, but if you're talking about, uh, private, a private component that might be supportive of an urban campus, certainly housing for the, um, administrative staff, the faculty and the students would meet what is needed for an urban campus.
The other question that I have and comment is, West Palm Beach is a very diverse community. Is there anywhere where we're identifying, um, a request for, um, reasonable act, reasonable effort to have enrollment that is diverse or inclusive and reflective of the community?
In our agreements, no, but in the state's statutes, uh, they direct how and, um, what the enrollments for the universities should look like. The statutes themselves have an, um, K through 20 educational, uh, criterion requirements for enrollment in, uh, universities and colleges and the state of Florida. I'd have to look at that specifically to see what those are, but they definitely are guided by the statutes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I don't know that this was part of your presentation, but on the slide where you had the map of the space, do we know the total size of the project compared to the total amount of land that the city is proposing to convey?
The city's conveyance, uh, to my recollection is approximately two and a half acres. There is about 10 acres additional that's outlined in purple, give or take some. It's, I haven't, uh, calculated it specifically, but it's about 10 acres.
Great, thank you.
Where's the city property on this map?
On this map, it's the property that is not outlined in, uh, purple, but on this map, it's the property here in red is the city property.
Okay, okay.
And all of the remaining property on the, um, blocks between Fern and Avernia and Avernia and DeTura are defined as the third-party prop.
Very good. President Paduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, um, to ask about the, it's my understanding that there was three entities initially contemplated, um, in the conveyance of property to make this project come to fruition, um, and that is my understanding that one or more of those entities conditioned their conveyance upon the others conveying their property. Can you tell us just where we stand on that? You know, just is this project going to move forward with, with just the city's conveyance of property or, or could you shed some light on that or any new developments there?
I, I can only tell you what I've been told, but it's not part of our, our actual agreement itself, but I've been told that, um, the university continues to work with the third-party property owners, um, one of whom is still in negotiations to, um, remove the requirement that all of the parcels be conveyed before donating the property.
Follow-up? Commissioner Shof?
Thank you. Part of our conveyance agreement is that all parties are part of this agreement, is it not?
The way that ours reads now is that 1.5 acres of the third-party parcels, which are the parcels not outlined in red, uh, on the screen, are assembled because that would be sufficient for the, my understanding, for the University of Florida to commence their, um, vision of the, uh, urban campus.
So essentially, there's a, a large vision of an urban campus and then there's a secondary vision of an urban campus if that should not pan out and ours is contingent upon some version of an urban campus moving forward.
My understanding, yes, that 1.5 acres is all that's necessary to start the vision in the, to bring it down the path of making it a reality.
Any other questions, comments? Well, I Well, I will say, and then I've always, I've said from the very beginning, I believe that this is a transformational project. It's a game changer for our city. And I'm happy that we, as a city, are the first one teed up to show our commitment to this project. Would heartily recommend the approval of the resolution. I had the pleasure of sitting on a panel with President Fox this afternoon in front of a number of real estate and business professionals. The energy in that room, and I'd say there were probably a couple of hundred folks there as they heard more about this project was, was almost tangible. I mean, you, you, you could just feel the energy and the excitement with the possibility of bringing the number five-rated public university in the nation to our downtown. These are not opportunities you get every day, sitting on this dais. And I am quite excited about the possibility presented and, and very proud that the city of West Palm Beach will be the first entity to show its commitment. So, if I don't hear any other, hearing no other comment, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 4989-22 on first reading.
Second?
It's been moved in second discussion. Hearing on, Madam Court, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4989-22. And orders our City Commissioner of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, approving the donation of certain properties located in downtown West Palm Beach to the University of Florida Foundation, Inc., to be used for an urban campus, authorizing execution of agreement for conveyance and development of real property, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations, President Fox. And carry on to the other organizations. The West Palm Beach is on board, sir. I know we have to do a second reading, Madam Attorney. I see you looking, but I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic we'll get past that. Okay, let us now return to the regular part of the agenda. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 20-22, adopting an update to the Flood Plane Management Plan, the Repetitive Loss Area Analysis, and the FEMA Program for Public Information. Mr. Wall?
Sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Ralph Wall. I'm a management analyst. I work in the Development Services Department. One of my jobs at the city is acting as the CRS Coordinator. And CRS stands for the Community Rating System, which is, administers the National Flood Insurance Program. The, tonight's resolution is to adopt three of our pro, our plans and programs that are identified under the FEMA CRS Program and that they will greatly enhance our standing with CRS, maintain it currently, and also give us an opportunity to actually improve our sta, our class rating. Currently, well, we have a Class V rating, which provides us with a 25% savings for policies in the special flood hazard areas. That represents approximately $410,000 annually in savings on insurance costs for the citizens who purchased flood insurance. These three programs have helped us to move up in a class and maybe potentially move up to more classes. So, they are the Flood Plane Management Plan, the Program for Public Information, and the Repetitive Loss Area Analysis Plans. Each of these plans require that we update them every five years. And this is a five-year update since the 2016 cycle visit. The Flood Plane Management Plans, at first, it was developed under the auspices of the Watersheds Advisory Committee, very active committee. It's a 10-step planning process, takes a couple of years to do it. We review flood ordinances, identify capital improvements, look at mitigation projects to help prevent flooding, and lots of other activities, including advertising information to the public. And in 2016, our Flood Plane Management Plan was scored among the top five in Florida. This will be our first time to try to maintain that rating or even prove it. The second plan here is the Program for Public Information. Again, it operates under the auspices of the Watershed Advisory Committee. Its primary purpose is to, is the effort of public information on flood insurance, flood safety, protection of the city's flood planes and natural functions. And this committee is composed of the, the committee members who are at large, we know from the, both the, from the public sector, representing various specific areas. And then, of course, we have participation with city staff from various departments. Again, the PPI was developed under the FEMA guidelines and helps us achieve a lot of, a lot of extra points. The final program is the Repetitive Loss Area Analysis. Repetitive loss areas of properties are properties that have had two or more claims of $1,000 paid within a 10-year period. And, and this has been tracked since 1978. Currently, the city has 27 repetitive loss properties. We have 13 identified repetitive loss areas. These, this study goes in and looks at all the areas, looks at the properties, and comes up with plans to mitigate the flooding in these areas. And as such, it's, it's a major portion of this project because we could go right in where the problems are happening, coming with projects that are going to solve the flooding for those areas. This, again, requires a five-year update. The Watersheds Advisory Committee, which has been instrumental in helping us develop all of these plans, there's the list of the people who are participants. Carla Bryant was the outgoing chair, but she was here for the whole six years and was instrumental in coordinating all of this activity with the, the committee. We have Antonio DuBois. He represents banking. Professor Bharat Gupta, his engineering and property development. He's a professor at FAU. Robert Norberg represents insurance industry. Daisy Perry is a, is a city resident. Lon Zabella, a city resident. Eric Sein is also a city resident, but he also helps represent real estate. And then, of course, we have Richard Wade, again, is a, is a private resident. Then we have our stat, city staff, Ralph Wall and the CRS Coordinator, and Alex Hansen out of Planning, Punam Kalcut. She was outgoing for utilities, but she was instrumental through this whole six-year period on this committee. Steve Mashula has left the city, but he was instrumental in helping us with this project. And then, of course, Penney Redford from Sustainability. Kathleen Water, Walter has done journeyman work on this project because lots of it has to do with public outreach. A lot of the points we get are directly as a result of what Kathleen and her staff has been able to do to advertise and get the message out to the public. And then, of course, we got Tracy Ward, our Senior Stormwater Engineer. He's been instrumental throughout the process. The, following the commission's adoption of these three updates, these updates will be submitted to ISO to be included in our five-year cycle visit verification. We'll, we'll continue to work to obtain, obtain a Class Four or higher. When we got our 2016 update, there was a prerequisite in place that we, even though we had enough points to go to a Class Four, there was a prerequisite that we couldn't get past. Since that time, state of Florida, DEM, has worked very closely with ISO to get them to reevaluate how they assess flood risk in Florida. And they've made a major breakthrough there. They, they did a grant with FAU. And so now we have what's called a Watershed Master Plan Initiative, which will qualify us, if we go down that road to get that initiative done and, and prepare this Watershed Master Plan, then we can go to a Class Four or even a Class Three. Just FYI, in 2016, we had 3,297 points. That made us easily into a Class Four, but only a couple of hundred points away from a Class Three. This time around, we don't know where it's going to go yet. Will it at least be a Class Four? But there's a possibility that we could get to a Class Three. Based on that, our insurance savings could go $485,000 to $560,000 a year. Are there any questions?
Any questions? President Paduzzi?
Just a quick one. I'm sorry. Were those numbers based upon us obtaining a Class Four or a Class Three? Or was that the range between Class Three and Four?
That's the range between, if we get to a Class Four was the low side, Class Three is the high side.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shof?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you. I know that you've put a lot of time and detailed work into this and brought us the presentation today. And a lot of our residents don't always realize, these are the things going on behind the scenes. And with global seat level rise and all of those things coming into play, this work becomes more and more important. So, thanks for the work that you do and excited to support you tonight. Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo those sentiments and say, I know this is not a shiny new building or a fun mascot, but it is the, the base of our infrastructure here in the city. And so, I just wanted to say thank you so much. Very thorough work that's being done here. And I know that our residents will benefit for years to come. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Green?
Very quickly, Rick Green, Development Services. I just want to publicly thank Mr. Wall for all of his efforts over the years and to publicly acknowledge this morning, we celebrated his 35th year with the city. So, I just wanted to publicly thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 20-22.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. No opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Wall.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 21-22, approving a local agency program agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for the construction of the Northmore Elementary Sidewalks Project in the amount of $2,198,670. Very good.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Christine Perdomo, Senior Project Engineer for the Engineering Services Department. Resolution Number 21-22 and Resolution Number 25-22F are for the, seeking the approval of the local agency program agreement between the City of West Palm Beach and the Florida Transportation Department for the Northmore Elementary Sidewalks Construction and its funding. So, currently, this project is located within the Northwood Hills neighborhood, specifically around the streets surrounding the Northmore Elementary School. This project essentially is going to build new sidewalks over non-existing sidewalks around the neighborhood. Currently, most of the kids that attend this school walk to school and from school using the roads with very little space between them and cars. So, essentially, this project is going to construct new sidewalks and new ramps in compliance with the American With Disabilities Act of 1990 to provide a safe passage to school, to kids to go to school and also for the residents to use. In addition to the construction of sidewalks, this project also proposes the construction of a multi-use trail to provide a safe passage to people that want to bike or walk within the neighborhood. This multi-use trail will be located at the North Terrace Drive between 45th Street and 39th Court. Also, this project includes the construction of enhanced crosswalks throughout the neighborhood and school zone upgrades such as new solar flashing signs and new striping in accordance with the school standards. And also milling and resurfacing within the limits of the project. Currently, the construction for this project is estimated to be around $2.2 million, from which if this grant is approved, we'll be receiving 100, $590,000 in grant funding for construction. And the city will match the funds of $1.6 million for the remainder of the construction. Right now, construction is expected to start by October 2022. And the project is expected to be completed by December of 2023. And the staff recommends the approval of Resolution Number 21-22 and Resolution Number 25-22F. Is there any questions?
Great job. Great, great presentation. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Shof?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to also echo thank you on this. I know this has been a long time coming and a result of a lot of neighborhood feedback over the years. Certainly, I know one of the things we didn't touch on that, that we've discussed is that the upgrades to the school crossings. And the, the school serves primarily a Hispanic population and a somewhat underserved population as well. Just wondering too, how are we reaching out to the community on an engagement plan to let them know this really great thing is happening? And that way, it can help them, you know, as we're going through the phases of construction and help their kids get a, a better pathway to school that can avoid kind of where we're doing our improvements. So, could you talk a little bit about that community engagement?
Sure. Actually, we met with the Neighborhood Association around May of last year, 2021, to discuss the design of the project and what the improvements were. Right now, we're planning another meeting as soon as we get a contractor so we can discuss the facing of the construction. We're proposing to just work on one street at a time. This will make it easier for people accessing the school and kids accessing the school so it's not that complicated going around. And also, we're going to be meeting with the school board as well to discuss this.
That's great. Thank you. If I can be of help to connect to the school and maybe also hold a, at least a bilingual, if not predominantly Spanish, meeting so that way we can make sure we communicate with parents. And, you know, I think that safety aspect is number one. Those kids are used to taking the same exact way to school every day, walking. We want to make sure that they're in the, the safest condition. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner, for that offer. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. And I know we're at the mercy of construction schedules. But anything that we can do to try to schedule this during summertime when kids aren't in school, I think would go towards that, trying to keep them safe.
Yes. Right now, this is our estimated start of construction date. Of course, if there's anything we can do to accelerate this process and start construction during the summer, we'll do. But right now, we're looking into going into advertise the project. And, you know, sometimes that takes a little bit of time. But as soon as we get a contract, if it's in the summertime, we'll absolutely start that around that time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for your work on this and the presentation tonight. I think, I mean, this, of course, I'm 100% in support of this. And it's really heartbreaking to hear that kids don't have sidewalks to walk to school. I'm wondering if we have any, I guess, method in the city to identify other schools that might have something similar. I know that there is a lot of work from the neighborhood for years on this issue. But I've also been called for other schools that don't have crosswalks, not, you know, as a situation like this, that there's no, no sidewalks at all. But I guess, is there anything that we're doing to identify any other areas that might have some? that might have something similar that we should be prioritizing, you know, for the coming budgets?
Yeah, certainly the city, I mean, we're always looking for improvements specifically around the schools. Some of the schools actually do request the city for these improvements. And as soon as we get our requests, we'll look into the design and what's going to take to make that happen. But yes.
Yes.
Is there, do we have a list of schools that we're looking at right now? Or, I mean, are there things that we should, I guess, that we should be looking at that you might have already identified or that they've contacted you? It's just that we should be aware?
I don't, I mean, I don't have the list with me right now. But we sure have other projects around school areas that are regarding ADA upgrades that have come from schools doing their request itself.
Is that something you could share with us later?
Yes, sure. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Share with me and the other, all the commissioners. Okay, any other questions? Comments? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve resolution 21-22 and resolution number 25-22F.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.3, resolution number 29-22, approving the change to the face of the city for the proposed design concept and infrastructure improvements for North Railroad Avenue Streetscape between 7th Street and 10th Street. The total cost of the project is estimated at $17,590,723 and partially funded by the CRA. No city funds are involved in this project.
Mayor, Commissioner, we are requesting continuance of these items for two weeks.
Oh, continuance. Okay. Dates to a date certain, which would be the 22nd?
Yes, 22nd. Yes, correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Mayor, move to continue this resolution to date certain February 22nd.
Yeah. Move is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries. Okay. Item 8.4, resolution number 34-22, requesting face of the city approval of the design for the Phipps Park Bill Moss Baseball Complex concession building and restroom facility improvements. Ms. Rockwell.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and Administrator Johnson. So we are here today to present to you the, Leah Rockwell, the Director of Parks and Recreation. So we're here to present to you today Phipps Park Bill Moss Baseball Complex Face of the City. We're very excited about these designs that we are presenting to you today for the concession stand and the restroom improvements. So Phipps Park Baseball, it's been around for over, I don't know, 60, 70 years at the most. Was it 1952 is what they say. So you can see Phipps Park. Oh, I can't talk this morning, this evening. Phipps Park sits between Dixie Highway and the railroad tracks. So that is our, two of our north-south perimeters of the park itself. And it sits at 4301 South Dixie Highway. This is what the concession stand currently looks like and has looked like since the 1950s. And you can also see that there is a small maintenance building that's there that used to be a part of a train station that was in Phipps Park. A little train that used to go around the park. So public involvement and participation that happened for this event was, we had several meetings, and I'm not going to read through this, but we had several design meetings with internal customers. The Parks Department, Engineering Services, Planning Department, to make sure that everything that we have in place to make this new concession stand and restroom meet the new criteria of regulations. Because what we have now is way outdated from the regulations that currently we have. We had three community meetings with the Phipps Park Board and their members. We also met with their concessionaire and the president of the Phipps Park League many times out on, out there in the park, talking about what their needs were to make this a very functional facility for their baseball league. So the internal customers and communications, as you can see, was with Engineering, Parks and Rec, and the Planning and Zoning Department. So the concession building sits right in the middle of the ball fields. And the restroom facility, as you can see, is going to be moved off to the side alongside the utility building. And this is just kind of like another rendering of it. It replaces the two-story concession building from the 1950s to a new one-story concession building that is 600 square feet enclosed with 211 square feet of covered area. That covered area is going to be used specifically by the concessionaire so that we don't have a commercial kitchen inside this building that requires a myriad of requirements. But like she is currently doing, she is doing a barbecue and everything outside the building. So this space is to meet her needs to fulfill the concession needs of the Little League. Also, there is going to be a new one-story restroom facility off to the side away from the concessions, which you can see, which is that long rectangular building. And it's going to be 211 square feet of covered area. Oh, no, it's 219 square feet of covered area and 590 square feet of enclosed space. Now, the number of restrooms that we have to provide now compared to what was provided in the 1950s is considerably different. So based on the capacity of the park itself, we have to really put in a great deal, many more stalls to meet that capacity, which is, we were like, really? That many? But they said yes. That's what our planning department said to meet code. So there's a total new of development of 1.190 square feet of enclosed space with an additional 430 square feet of covered area. So with that being said, I am going to introduce our architect, who did all of this beautiful work. This is Juliet Schiff, and she is with Assanti Design. She is the principal designer and president of her architectural firm. And we're going to let her move forward with it.
Good evening, Mayor James and Commissioners.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be here. We have so enjoyed this collaboration with the Engineering Department and the Director of Parks and Recreation and all the members of Phipps Park. We are delighted to have been selected, to have the opportunity to design these new facilities. And I'd like to present some of the images to you. Just to reflect back for a minute, the way that occupancy is determined for number of bathroom facilities, in case it comes up as a question, is based on the Florida Building Code. And we had to actually go out and measure the linear feet of the benches. And for every 18 inches of linear feet, it's considered one occupant. So COVID aside and social distancing aside, the Florida Building Code hasn't caught up with us yet. And we are expected to provide restroom facilities based on the Florida Building Code in case a change is made. So that's why you'll see so many. Okay? So that is the view that you will see. That is the exact same view that Leah showed at the beginning as you leave the parking lot and you walk down the existing pedestrian path. We're not going to change that. We're not going to remove any trees. Everything will remain. There are four baseball fields out there, and that's the view that you'll see. A little bit of an angled view. You can see the baseball fields in the background, the existing fencing. And at this point, you can see the view to place an order, which is covered now, which is an improvement over what we have today, which is an uncovered unprotected spot for people to place orders at the window. Of course, the window meets ADA height and accommodates the functional requirements of everyone in the concession air's staff. Here's another view, little bit of a distance, to give you an idea of how the new building relates and sits on the site with regard to the existing structures that will be retained. From the opposite side, that's the pickup window. And you can see the, in the distance, let me see. I don't see it. There we go. I'm sorry. One slide behind. In the distance, you can see the restroom building in the distance beyond the concession building. So one of the things that was very important to staff and to everybody that collaborated on the project was to remove the restrooms out of the concession building and put it in a separate location. Another view, that view gives you a view from the bleachers of what the pickup window looks like. So if the parents are sitting there, they can have their eye on their kids who are standing at the window picking up food and drinks. Here's another view. If you were at the restroom building or looking towards the restroom building, we have the required drinking fountain in the center. And then to the left and the right, we are concealing the entrance for privacy so that no one can actually see into the restrooms. However, there is a gate. I want to point that out to you right here. The mouse isn't working. If you look to the left, there is a metal gate there so that in the evening, we can secure that space. And there also, we created pokey holes so that nobody can hide and use that little entry space for anything that we don't want to happen in the park. The budget is, for the overall project, is 1.25 million. We do have funding for it. We are planning to have our construction documents 100% ready September 2022, which means we'll have already hopefully received approval from everyone this evening. And we'll move on to site plan approval and then commence with construction documents. The project is scheduled to be completed by December 2023. It will be designed in one phase, but built in two phases so that we will build the restroom building before we demolish the existing concession building. And we are planning to work closely with the schedule of the Parks Manager so that we minimize the interruption of the baseball events throughout the project. And that's what I have for you, unless you have any questions for myself or for Leah.
Ms. Rockwell, you finished your presentations? Okay, fine. Any questions for staff or the architect? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. This is very exciting to see come to fruition. I know a number of the residents and parents that visit this will be very pleased with this. If you, if people watching have not been to Phipps Park, I would highly recommend you go. I know that opening day is coming up. I think it's February 28th. And we attract families from all over the city and even from other parts of Palm Beach County. And it is a great resource that we have in our city. So thank you to you for your investment in this and to my colleagues on the dais for investing in this as well. I am curious, what is the capacity based on the 18 inches of linear feet? Do you know? Rough estimate?
I think we have four. So we also have something in the code that's called potty parity, which basically means for every two men's toilets, we need three women's. So we have more women's than men's. In this, I believe we have four women's. And we also have four in the men's because we provided a urinal for expediency.
Well, this is really getting too big.
I mean, you asked me a question.
Thank you, Commissioner, for asking that question. Okay. I appreciate it.
Capacity of the park based on the 18 inches of measurements, we can get back to you with that detail.
Yeah, see, just, yeah, send us that in writing.
Right. And I mean, and it's interesting, if the bleachers had dividers, then the dimension increases to 36 inches. So there's nothing in between 18 and 36 in the Florida Building Code right now. That is how they count occupants for recreation facility. These bleachers are bolted to the ground. They're not removable, and we need them. There's more than 1,000 people out there when we have active games. So we believe that the restrooms will be utilized. We also have diaper changing tables in both the men's and the women's.
Wonderful. Very good. Thank you. And one other question related, somewhat related, I guess, tangentially. I saw, and you mentioned the water fountains that were there. Would it be possible to install a water fountain where you refill your water bottle instead of just the leaning over kind?
Yes, absolutely. Typically, what we're doing now with all of our drinking fountains, we're doing the dual. So you can either do a water bottle filler or just a regular drinking fountain. So that's, that's what we're going to with all of our replacements. So we will put that in this plan as well.
Great. And I'm sure we have a contractor, a supplier for that. But I have seen the ones where it actually counts the number of ounces saved. And if that's something that we could use as a city to report in our sustainability efforts if we do include these elsewhere throughout the city, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. That's a great suggestion.
President Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. And forgive me because I really know nothing about construction costs. But 1.3 million for what appears to me to be just concrete block structures that are fairly simple seems like a lot of money. Could you maybe just educate me that this is not, that it's a reasonable amount of money to spend on these structures?
So we also have metal roofs that match the roofs that are out there, which will give us, you know, 50 years of lifetime with very little maintenance, integral gutters so that we won't have rainwater just flooding everywhere. We are going to redo the sidewalk around the concession area that's going to have to be done. And there's civil engineering work that has to be done as well to accommodate moving the restrooms across the courtyard and the protection of the big, beautiful trees that are out there. So this project involves multiple disciplines. Surveyors, civil engineers, mechanical engineer. There is engineer, there is air conditioning for the park manager's office that's planned. There's a janitor's closet as well. Bottom line, we're looking at, in the neighborhood of somewhere, about $600 a square foot construction cost. And because the project will be phased, it will go up because there's always a mobilization cost when you do a construction project. First dollar costs for everything, whether it's bringing out the cranes or the concrete trucks. So the phasing will impact the cost.
Follow up?
I think that just makes me question it more, hearing $600 a square foot. And maybe, I know that I don't have the background that Commissioner Shof has, but I've heard that new construction for a commercial is lower than that. But maybe, maybe times have changed because of the cost of goods and labor.
So we're budgeting high so that we can come in lower and have excess funds so that we can create a shade structure in the open area. Currently, there's an area with built, you know, concrete built-in picnic tables, and there is no shade out there. So we are budgeting within our budget to accommodate for that. Those shade structures are fairly expensive. They're not presented yet. We do have within our project three cost estimates that we will be providing to engineering, one at 60% construction documents, one at 90%, and one at 100%. So we have, as part of our services, engaged a professional cost estimating company to provide cost estimates before we even go out for bid. So we will be watching the dollars and cents very carefully on this project. We can bring it in for, you know, $400 a square foot. That'll, that'll be wonderful.
Also, Commissioner, you know, we're estimating at this. However, there's other, other items on the wish list that the baseball organization would like to see. So if the project comes in under what we're estimating high, then some of those elements that were not originally earmarked, we can then work towards providing for them to improve their facilities, which includes that giant shade structure that they're asking for. So we'd rather overestimate than not have enough money when we get to the project itself.
Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I think to the Commissioner's point, the things I'd like to point out is 1.2 million dollars is pretty low, actually, comparatively. like to point out is 1.2 million dollars is pretty low, actually comparatively. When you see concrete structures above the ground, what you don't see is all the plumbing below the ground that had to go into move toilets, moving plumbing, as well as interior furniture, fixtures and equipment, everything that has to go into the engineering, the structural behind it. So, I get the notion to think there's just a couple of concrete structures, but there is landscaping, site work, all kinds of civil things that go into having new infrastructure put in place. I totally get the notion. But I think, you know, we've had these issues on other projects throughout the city where they were budgeted out of penny sales tax four years ago, and costs overrun our two times what they should have been because of the tight labor market now. So, I can tell you, other side of my life, construction budgets are running 20 and 30% over what they were a year ago. So, I get the notion to overbudget this and have some of those scope items that can be taken off. And I think that's a smart way to do it rather than come up short of, you know, one public restroom that you're going to need. So, just offering that commentary.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 34-22.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We will now move to Item 9.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 4976-21 Regarding a City-Initiated Text Amendment to the City Code of Ordinances at Chapter 78, Article 6, Special Events, and Chapter 94, Section 94-40712, Temporary Signs for Special Non-Commercial Events to amend the Code provisions relating to special event permits on public and private property. Mr. Fana.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. So, this is the second reading. There has been a change to the sign portion of the events ordinance, which will allow, this is to accommodate institutions that are doing exhibits that are prolonged beyond a couple of weeks. So, we're allowing for signage or banners to be placed within the proximity of the institutions and one-half mile proximity from the institutions to be able to allow for banners when there is an event that is exceeding two weeks in duration. And that is the only change to the ordinance from the first reading.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Shof.
Thank you. Armando, if you could just clarify on the last statement that you made. So, events that are occurring for more than two weeks, so the event has to be more than two weeks long, correct?
Yeah. If it's a long-term and ongoing exhibit, for example, then those could be in, within the proximity of a half a mile of where those exhibits are taking place, they can then have the banners up for up to six months is the longest.
Okay. That was my last question. I didn't know what the duration was. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I wondered if you can just, I know that the last meeting, we talked much more about the parking and other parts of this ordinance. And so, I'm wondering if now you could clarify a little bit about what happens with these banners that were limiting them. Is it because we ourselves are using these banners for our events or that we're just getting too many applications and that there's just no way to be fair? Or if you could just talk a little bit about it, because I have heard, you know, from some, I think, some of the places that have special events that weren't aware of this part of the ordinance until now. And I, myself, wasn't really focused on it either. So, if you can just clarify a little bit, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely. So, you know, we are an event city. We do get a lot of events, particularly this time of year. And so, in some of our higher demand areas like Okeechobee, like Clematis, there are a number of applications that come in for those types of events to hang banners up. And so, in order to be equitable and to be able to give the opportunity for other organizations to, or other events, excuse me, to be able to post those banners, we've instituted this two-week limit, which has kind of been a practice of the city for a while. We just didn't have it codified. But also, to have some flexibility when there is these ongoing exhibits, we modified the language to allow for that six-month period within the proximity of a half a mile. And they could still do the two weeks, whoever's doing the exhibit, they can still do the two weeks in other streets for that two-week period. And they can do multiple two-week periods. It doesn't have to be just one two-week period. So, if you have a six-month exhibition, you can do the two weeks before the exhibit opens or right when it's exhibit opens. You can do it in the middle and then possibly at the end. But we do get a lot of applications, and we want to make sure we're equitable with that. And we want to make sure we don't have banners all over the city all the time either.
Follow up.
I thank you so much. I wondered if you could also talk a little bit about why we're requiring them to be within one-half mile of the entity. I think in some ways, we have places, you know, like the Norton Museum, they're, you know, kind of world-renowned museum, I think, offering so much to our whole city. And I think in terms of the exhibits that they're bringing, they were hoping to, you know, reach people that are not just within one-half a mile of the museum that might already be driving to the museum. You know, is there, are there any other, I guess, provisions that we can include to, you know, if something on Okeechobee, let's say, for example, that was more than a half a mile away, I mean, if it wasn't being used at the time, are there any kind of provisions that we can put, like on a first, you know, come first sort of basis if things are open? We can allow other entities to use it or apply for it or a special fee or, you know, something that just might be offering a little bit more to help advertising, you know, whatever the exhibitions are.
You mean outside of that two-week period for the example, Okeechobee Boulevard?
Or outside of the half-mile.
Well, yes, within the half-mile, it's a six-month. But outside the half-mile, they can still advertise. It's just, it'll be a two-week period that they can do so. So, you're saying extending it beyond the two weeks?
I mean, is there ever a time that something's not being used that we might, you know, say, okay, well, my understanding is that they're paying for this. So, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There's a small fee.
If there was a time that, so if something wasn't being used, I mean, can we still offer it up for these opportunities? I understand that we want to be fair and making sure that we are allowing all the events. But, you know, I think that we have some things that are particularly special that might need extra advertising or, you know, just helping to get the word out. I'm just wondering if there's any other provisions that we can update.
Not the way that, not the way that ordinance is written now. But, you know, I'll just give you an example, like the Kravitz Center, right? They have a lot of events. They may have shows going on throughout the entire season. If we open that door, then that opens the door, not just for the Norton, it opens the door for every institution. And so, the Kravitz Center can come in and say, well, we want to advertise our shows for the season on Okeechobee and other roads beyond the two-week period. So, we've got to kind of try to balance it out as much as possible. You know, if there are no banners or no applications in a certain area, can we be flexible? Yeah, on a case-by-case basis, we could probably look at that. But in general, we want to try to keep these regulations in place. And I'll remind folks that this is just a very small way of advertising an event. There's a lot of ways to advertise an event. And I, you know, I talked, if you go to, if you go to places like the financial district, or they have these banners up all the time because we allow that, if it's within a neighborhood district, advertising that neighborhood, after a while, it becomes part of the landscape of that neighborhood, and you don't even notice the banners. So, there's a little bit to be said about kind of mixing it up. And they can, as I said, the institutions can come back and do another two weeks later on. It's probably more effective advertising anyway.
Commissioner Shof and Commissioner Lambert, before we go on, I'll remind everyone, we do have a strict mask mandate in here. So, if you're not wearing your mask, we'll ask you to leave. Anyone not wearing a mask, I'd ask you to put it on now. Ms. Mackovic, will you please put on your mask?
Yes, sir. So did you.
Thank you very much.
I'm coming back to make a gentle comment at the end of this meeting.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, Mayor. In listening to what I think Commissioner Fox is getting at here, it sounds like the goal is available because you're looking at six months within a half-mile radius. So, it's, if there's something like, the Commissioner brought up the Norton, they have an exhibit that can happen within six months, they can pick two-week periods outside of that half-mile radius and purchase that advertising and still have the event. They just can't purchase a six-month period outside of that half-mile radius.
That is correct.
So, to the Commissioner's point, that is available. If there are empty banners, if they want to purchase banner time somewhere outside of there, they can certainly do so. They could just do it in two-week increments.
Correct.
Okay.
Somebody else had their hand up. Commissioner Lambert.
Well, I appreciate that we have worked with the staff to make some adjustments to this ordinance. So, thank you for doing that. And I certainly want to make sure that we're taking into consideration that not only is this benefiting the museums or the cultural art center, but that those then in turn help the city and attract people here. And it's part of the reason why they want to come, either move here or visit here. And I would say, to the extent that we can be flexible and on a case-by-case basis, make it known to the entities that do want to advertise more, that we have open slots, that we let them know that. I was curious, because you talked about the Kravis Center. So, in a half-mile radius of that area, is that, and with the number of events that they have, I would imagine it's 100% utilized.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I failed to mention that. Within the ordinance, the change also, it does, excludes Okeechobee Boulevard and Clematis because of the high demand for those. So, those will only be on two-week increments.
And have we talked to other cultural arts centers about this ordinance? And are they aware of this change?
Well, no, not beyond the Norton. But this was basically the change that's in here, or what's in here in the ordinance now, was what was being practiced in our application process. This is just codifying it.
Okay. So, we won't be startling the Kravis by saying now you're, and now they will be limited to two weeks, or they always were?
Right. They, right. They were always limited to two weeks anyway. If anything, we're going to attract more people interested in the banners that need to know they could do it. So.
Gotcha.
And I think Mr. Fana raised a good point. I don't see our banners on our streets as being the primary source of advertising for these events. Social media, print, whatever. But, you know, I doubt if the banners are the primary opportunity to advertise an event in any of these cultural organizations. So, I think the accommodation that we've made is a very fair one. Any, any other comments, questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Ordinance Number 4976-21. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the text amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and complies with the standards found in Section 94-32 of the City Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4976-21. An令下到City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, I amend the code of ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 78, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, to amend and replace Article 6, Special Events, revising the regulations regarding special events and special event permits, amending Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Section 94-407, signs permitted in all districts, to amend the regulations addressing temporary signs for non-commercial events of public interest, providing a compliance clause, a codification clause, and a sustainability clause providing an effective date and for the purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we're going into the quasi-didicial portion of the meeting. Commissioners, I'll need you to make your disclosures. We'll begin with you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. As to Item 10.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the developers. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to Item 10.2, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. As to Item 10.1, I have had experte communications with the developer, with representatives of the developer and with residents. I have received written communications via email. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. As to Item 10.2, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation, nor have I made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox.
As to this matter, Item 10.1, I have had experte communications with the developers and residents. I have received written communications via email. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Right.
Oh, sorry. As to Item 10.2, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Warren.
Good evening. In reference to Matter 10.1, I have had experte communications with the developer, the developers representative and residents. I have not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. In reference to Matter Number 10.2, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Shof.
As to Item 10.1, I have had experte communication with the development team. I have had written communications, received written communications from residents. I have not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor received expert opinions. As to Item 10.2, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you very much. Madam Kirk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Ms. Mayor, can I ask a question? City Attorney, according to the agenda, 10.2 is being continued? Do I still?
They're going to ask for it to be continued, yes.
Okay. So, I don't need to swear in, or do I need to still include it?
They're more than likely, isn't anyone here for 10.2 for swearing in purposes?
Okay. Everyone wishing to speak on Item 10.1, please stand and raise your right hand. You swear the testimony about to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Maybe seated.
Okay. Item 10.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 4984-21, amending the downtown master plan element of the comprehensive plan, creating the new NORA district. Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 4985-21, amending the downtown master plan zoning atlas to delineate the boundaries of the new NORA district. And Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 4986-21, amending the Chapter 94, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Regulations, establishing regulations for the new NORA district.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and Maria Ponte, City of Van Deyeners. This has been a long process. I want to refresh a little bit of your memory really quickly about how we have gone through here. First step of this process of the code amendments that we have been doing was the comprehensive plan amendments, including Ordinance 4984-21. We started that process October last year and was approved by the Downtown Action Committee and by the Planning Board, and subsequently was approved by the City Commission November 29, 2021. After the City Commission approval, the item was sent to the Department of Economic Opportunity for review. And on January 12, 2022, we received a letter from the EO with a no comment stating that they were ready to basically move ahead with the adoption of the comprehensive plan amendments. After that, or subsequently to that, we also move ahead with the changes to the zoning code and the rezoning necessary to move ahead the entire project for the NORA rezoning, including in Ordinance 4985 and Ordinance 4986-21. Those items were approved by the Downtown Action Committee and the Planning Board last year in November and were approved by the City Commission on January 10, 2022. So, now we are in front of you with the final step for this process, that is the approval of the second reading for the three ordinances. No changes have been included since first reading, so the ordinance are the same. And we just recommend approval for Ordinance 4984-21 based on the finding that data and analysis presented by the staff report and the staff report and based on the finding that the amendment meets the requirements of Chapter 163, Florida statutes, and is consistent with other elements of the comprehensive plan. We also recommend approvals for Ordinance 4985-21 and Ordinance 4986-21 based on the data and analysis presented in the staff report and based on the findings that the amendments comply with all the amendment standards found in Section 163. amendments comply with all the amendment standards found in section 94-32 of the LDRs. That concludes the staff presentation. If you have any questions, we are here to answer.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Any questions of staff? Okay, we do have several cards. I'll call out three at a time, and if you can start approaching the podium. Dennis Grady, Sylvia Sharps, Verissa LaRas. Mr. Grady?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Dennis Grady appeared before you through all stages of this project and before the Planning Board. I don't think we need to go over the facts again. Chamber of Commerce supports this and has endorsed the project. I also stand before you this evening as a member of the Board of Governors of Good Samaritan Hospital, who has formally issued their support and endorsement of this project. Good Sam represents over 1,000 employees. This is one of the most exciting opportunities we've had in a long time, to take the downtown master plans' positive economic development impacts, pull it to the north of the downtown, and begin in what I think will be a continual advancement to the northern ends of the city of West Palm Beach. I urge you to reinforce your actions at the first reading and unanimously adopt staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia Sharps?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Sylvia Sharps. I've spoken to you before regarding this project. I am in favor of the project still. I'm looking forward to it being brought to fruition. Addressing this problem by approving the aforementioned amendment, I believe will have a domino effect on other areas within the city, thereby bringing some positive changes. And while change is hard, nothing is permanent except change. Thank you.
Thank you. Verissa LaRas?
Mayor and members of the Commission, my name is Verissa Aldos. I am a downtown resident at The Prado. And this project is a very important step in bridging the connectivity between downtown and our underserved community on the north end. What I find particularly exciting about this project is the opportunities for affordable housing that it creates. I hope that you will vote in favor of equity and innovation. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call out three other names, and if you can start approaching the podium. David Smith, Bill Nugent, and John Jody. Mr. Smith?
Yes, the masks are needed, but they're still clumsy. I'm in favor of this project, and it reminds me of something I used to tell some of the Commissioners that I've worked with in the past about their reading lists. This fits under your primary book, The Little Engine That Could. We're moving north. It's been a long time coming. Keep it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Nugent?
Mayor, Commissioners, Bill Nugent, Florida Avenue, Historic Grandview Heights. I'm here again this evening. You've all heard all the information. You know everything there is to know about where this is at so far. I would only ask you again tonight to embrace an innovative approach that really wraps its arms around, thankfully, keeping and maintaining the actual historic West Palm Beach character and nature of the neighborhood and the warehouse industrial portion of it that is in place. And it's a really innovative approach in terms of development and financing. And I say this is a model for us to look at as an example going forward. I hope you'll all vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. John Jody? I apologize for mispronouncing.
Good evening, Mayor James, Commissioner. I fully support the project.
Give us your full name, please.
Amish, Jadu, Nunden.
Okay. You say it much better than I do.
I currently live at 435 and 437 Eighth Street. And I fully support the project. You may have heard the saying that, you know, put your money where your mouth is. I believe in the projects in the success of NORA that acquire properties so as to be closer to the heart of NORA. Move from 11th Street to 8th Street. And please keep in mind that the zoning of the residential area remain the same, and that zoning hasn't helped the area improve. As the NORA project progresses, I will evaluate how it affects the residential area and may come back to you guys for additional zoning changes to assist the residential area. Please approve the changes. The NORA team is requesting. And on a side note, as a Florida Gator, I'm happy that University of Florida is forming a campus here in the city of West Palm Beach. So, go NORA, go Florida Gators. Thank you.
Gator Nation is strong.
Heck, yeah.
Three more names. Susan Steckney, Thomas Boynton, and Pam Rides. And Ms. Steckney, I appreciate your writing out the phonetic pronunciation of your name. It made it much easier. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Susan Steckney, 411 Eighth Street. So I'm going to be able to look just not far, right down my block, and there I will see NORA, and as well as the rest of the neighbors on 8th Street who are unanimously in favor of this and just wonderful. And I just want to say that this is in line with the 2009 master plan with the industrial chic. They wanted to keep the industrial buildings, and they had hoped that that would spur individual buyers to come along and purchase them and remodel them. Well, this is even better. It's a whole plan, thoughtfully planned and looking to see it executed. So, thank you very much. And also, I want to say that Anna Maria Ponte is wonderful. She, you know, looks at details. She makes sure everything is okay before she approves it and for the city. And she's wonderful to the community who comes there to ask her questions.
Thank you very much. Thomas Boynton?
Yeah. Hello, my name is Thomas Boynton, son of Susan Steckney, and we've been longtime investors in Breville Park and now the new NORA district. I just wanted to say that we definitely support the program. The one thing, though, that still keeps me up at night a little bit that I'm not seeing, we just came from the Urban Land Institute, and we keep saying that we want affordable housing, that we want less cars, we're going to make less parking spaces. But I think there's a little niche with electric vehicles and scooters that I'm not hearing anybody talk about. So, yeah, I support this program, but I just wanted to note that as we create these little districts, that even though it is walkable, I think that as we have more different battery-powered vehicles that come, that we should start really looking into that. If we have 20% affordable housing there, instead of them having to own a car, if we could encourage them to buy a scooter or another type of transportation to get around the city, I think that would greatly improve in all the different districts that we develop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your suggestion, and a lot of that's been incorporated in our mobility plan, which we are in the process of implementing. But thank you. Pam Rides?
Yes. Good evening, all. I want to thank you first for just having this. I really feel good about the project. First of all, I support it. I'm going to be impacted by it, but in a very positive way. I'm very excited about it, and I'm just, that's all I really got to say about the thing. Just thank you.
Thank you very much. Two other names, two other cards, Rick Rickennis and Darren Studstill.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Rick Rickennis, 801 South Olive, Suite 105. And thank you very much. I also was at the ULI Conference this afternoon. I think the best ULI Conference I've ever been to. Go West Palm Beach, go Gators, and go everything else. I don't even know where to start. I mean, this place is on fire right now, and thanks to all of you. Full disclosure, Rickennis and Associates is the engineer for the NORA district. In spite of that, I think this is a great project and it merits your full support and continue to support. I think it's going to be great for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Darren Studstill?
Good afternoon, Darren Studstill, 401 North Rosemary. I'm excited about this project, but I'm just going to not use up all my time here. Sometimes the coach come in the locker room, and you did all the prep, and you say it's now it's time to go and win the game. So I think this is a great opportunity. We can go out and just win the game. What I'm very excited for, and I'm going to hold these accountable, and I'm going to ask the Commissioner to do the same. The one thing, the greatest gift that I think we have is to create opportunities for everyone. I am so excited about this. I'm excited about exceeding minority participation in our goals and having opportunities come to the neighborhoods who need it the most. So, lastly, I want to say, I know we have a lot of Florida Gators fans in here. I'm a West Virginia grad. My last game with the Florida Gators was very unpopular. But I'm excited by the University of Florida coming here, but I don't want anybody to YouTube that game of me on the University of Florida, but I'm excited about them coming also. So, but it's just time to go and win the game. I'm excited about this project, and I can't wait to get going.
Thank you very much. Anything coming through the portal, Madam Kirk? Okay.
Yes, I have something that came through. Natalie Jakes, 1409 13th Street, West Palm Beach. I oppose. Carolyn Gilks, 16977 Keyline Boulevard, Locksahatchee, Florida. I oppose. Carolyn Edwards, 1417 West 37th Street, Riviera Beach. I oppose. Elaine Tompkins, 1232 West 23rd Street, Riviera Beach. I oppose.
Riviera, you said?
Jennifer Reed, 433 11th Street, West Palm Beach. I oppose. Lydian Sykes Weathersby, 433 11th Street, West Palm Beach. I oppose. Leon Reed, 433 11th Street, West Palm Beach. I oppose. Gail Harold, 276 Chatham North, West Palm Beach. I oppose.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the cards, all the public comment. Any other questions, comments, Commissioners? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 4984-21, amending the downtown master plan element of the comprehensive plan, replacing the industrial chic district, ICD, with the newly established North Railroad Avenue NORA district, modifying portions of the Breville Park District, PBD-R and PBD-V, and allowing for increased height and development capacity in newly designated TDR incentive areas of the NORA district. This motion is based on the factual testimony presented, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the finding that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4984-21. An order to the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan at the downtown master plan element, policy 1.1.1, policy 2.3.2, and policy 3.1.3, to promote the redevelopment of the area between Quadriple Boulevard, North Dixie Highway, Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, and the FEC Railroad, creating the new North Railroad Avenue District, NORA, removing the existing industrial chic district, modifying the existing Breville Park District, designating additional incentive areas which allow additional height and development capacity within the North Railroad Avenue District, and designating two properties as urban open space. Declaring the proposed amendments to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan, providing a compliance clause and survivability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Fox?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 4985-21, amending the DMP zoning atlas to create the NORA district. This motion is based upon the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section 94-32 of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4985-21. An order to the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the downtown zoning atlas to create the North Railroad Avenue, NORA district, and sub-district generally located between Quadriple Boulevard, North Dixie Highway, Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, and the FEC Railroad, rezoning certain properties as NORA 2 and NORA 5, rezoning two properties as urban open space, and specifying the street classification within the NORA district. Declaring these proposed zoning map amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a compliance clause and survivability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Fox?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 4986-21, amending the DMP urban regulations to include the necessary regulations for the new NORA district. This motion is based upon the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section 94-32 of the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4986-21. An order to the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the code of ordinances at Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, to provide regulations for the North Railroad Avenue District and the Breville Park District, specifically amending the following sections, figures, and tables, Section 94-102, organization of the urban regulations, Section 94-105, use requirements, Table 4-2, permitted use table for DMP, Table 4-3, permitted use table for DMP, Section 94-109, definitions and minimum requirements, Table 4-6, open space types by sub-district, excuse me, Section 94-111, parking and loading requirements, Table 4-9, parking requirements, Table 4-11, curb cuts and passenger loading and drop-off standards, Section 94-121, special district planning area, Section 94-124, North Railroad Avenue District, Table 4-28, building requirements, NORA 5, Table 4-29, building requirements, NORA 2, Section 94-125, Lofton District, LD, Section 94-127, Breville Park District, BPD, Table 4-34, building requirements, BPD-5, Table 4-35, building requirements, BPD-R, Section 94-131, incentive programs, General Section 94-132, Transfer of Development Rights Program, Section 94-133, special district incentives, Table 4-35, TDR sending and receiving sites, Section 94-135, Okeechobee Business District, OBD, Section 94-273, extra requirements for special uses or permitted uses, and any other sections within Article 4, Downtown Master Plan Urban Regulations, necessary to establish the North Railroad Avenue District, providing a compliance clause, a codification clause, and survivability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, the next item we're continuing, do we have a date certain to which they'd like to continue it? So we need a motion, or they're just?
Mr. Mayor, Rick Green Development Services Director, they are asking to be continued until August 8th.
Until August 8th?
Correct.
Until August 8th. Okay, I need a motion to that effect, please.
Mayor, I move to continue this item to August 8th.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. All right, now it's time for comments from the public. We have one card. All right, is Sandy Makovich still here? Okay, we don't see her. Okay, I called her name. All right. Now it's time for comments from members of the dais, and we'll begin with, what? We'll begin with Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to recognize a very successful event last weekend that the IBIS Charities had, which was the IBIS Charities Food Drive. And I'd like to thank my colleagues on the dais for literally doing some of the heavy lifting, coming out and assisting us. We collected over 33,000 pounds of food, and they collected it... We collected over 33,000 pounds of food, and they collected it, and this was as of, like, immediately after the food drive, we collected $15,000, so I expect that number to be significantly higher. But kudos to everyone, and thank you for everyone who came out. You know, 33,000 pounds of food will go a long way in addressing the needs of the community. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Very good. We'll switch it up a bit. Commissioner Shuf?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say to you, Mayor, congratulations on the state of the city with a very well-attended event, had a ton of great information, and such positive things to report. It's really, really incredible, the place we found ourselves going into 2020 and 2021, and now into 2022. You know, none of us knew what our roadmap was, but it really has come a long way. So, congratulations to you and my colleagues on the dais here for your leadership. I wanted to make sure everyone here was aware in the public, we have two upcoming events, the Sunday on the waterfront on February 20th and on March 20th at Curry Park at 4:00 PM. So, thank you to staff for setting up those events. We'll have concerts right at one of our great waterfront parks in the north end, so please come out and join us, and cross your fingers that the weather holds out. And two events happening this month, it is Black History Month, and there are a ton of great events happening, so please check city calendars, county calendars, get out there and check out some black history culture. A month is far too short to contain it, so there's plenty of ways you can get out and celebrate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Just actually, a few sad things that happened recently that I just want to express my condolences to the family of the bicyclist who lost their life yesterday on the Middle Bridge here. I don't know if you all heard about that accident, but just, and the other accident recently on South Dixie, another motorcycle accident happened, and it's just, you know, I think we're all rushing a lot of places. I think people are very distracted and just want to encourage folks to look out for others when you're driving. Also, you know, as it relates to South Dixie, encourage our staff to, if there are other creative ways that we can help reduce the speed on Dixie, I realize that that's an F-dot road, but just if there's ways that we can partner with them, that we can look at landscaping to help decrease the speed there. I know it's 35 miles an hour there, but often people are going 55, easy. On a positive note, wanted to mention the storm drain project that we approved last commission meeting. I was driving around with my family this weekend, and our son saw it out the window, and he's like, "What is that?" And it grabbed his attention, and it got us talking about the environment and talking about sustainability and where things that get thrown in the storm drain go. So, kudos, Mayor, to you and to your staff for that program. And then finally, just wanted to say thank you. I know that David Smith has already left, but I think I might start a book between Mr. Smith and Coach Studstill of the isms that you give us and the coach advice that you give us at these commission meetings. They're always on point and entertaining, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say happy Black History Month. Black History Month was started by a young man by the name of Dr. Carter G. Woodson. Dr. Woodson was the second person to graduate from Harvard with a PhD. The first person to graduate, and he did that in 1912. The first person to receive their PhD at Harvard was W.E.B. Du Bois in 1895, being the first to graduate from Harvard with a PhD. And I think you followed them shortly, Mayor, in 1919.
Whoa, whoa, whoa!
When did you go to Harvard?
Happy Black History Month to you, sister! Wow! I just came out of nowhere.
I just thought...
But thank you for sharing. But no, it's the answer to your question. Okay, okay. I see where you're going.
What? What? Okay.
Wow!
Well, I'm not the historian. Dr. Woodson was a historian. Thank you. Thank you, Administrator.
I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson, you okay over there? You look like you about to have a fit. Okay, that's right. That's right. I got you. Okay.
So, the historian, Dr. Woodson, was among the first to study the African diaspora. He was among the first, and he celebrated the contributions that African-Americans made to society through inventions. And originally, Black History Month was known as Black History, excuse me, Negro History Week, and that was first created in 1926, 1926, by Dr. Carter G. Woodard, and then it later became, oh, and Dr. Carter G. Woodard also went on to author one of the bestselling African-American studies books of all times, and that book is called The Miseducation of the Negro, and that was published in 1933. Black History Month was actually observed originally by President Gerald Ford in 1976, and that's when it became Black History Month. There are so many things to recognize and to celebrate. As I mentioned, The Miseducation of the Negro, I'd also like to mention another book that would be a great read, and it's called The Color of Law. And The Color of Law was written by a gentleman by the name of Richard Rothstein. Richard Rothstein states that neighborhoods are almost exclusively African-American, are almost exclusively white, and he states in his book that was written in 2017 that that was a result of explicit government policy, that it still exists and that has contributed to the home values in those communities, as well as wealth generation and wealth exclusion because of the segregation of those communities. So, it's a very interesting read, and I encourage everyone to buy The Color of Law and read it or download it or do an audiobook, but it is full of lots of very good information. And while we celebrate Black History Month this year in 2022, Black History Month, Black History theme is black health and wellness, and I would like to take this time to encourage you to do the things that are necessary to live your healthiest, best quality of life. That includes your routine checkups, it includes your mammogram, it includes your well woman, it includes your prostate exam, it includes having conversations that may be uncomfortable, as long as it results in you making the choices that have you, that lead you toward living a healthier quality of life. While we're talking about Black History Month, I would like to celebrate a few black history facts here in the city of West Palm Beach. I would like to acknowledge, I wrote some notes, I would like to acknowledge that Mayor Keith James, you are, in fact, are the very first strong mayor, black strong mayor that the city of West Palm Beach has seen, and under your leadership, in the first couple of years of your leadership, we've seen record-breaking projects that you shared with us during the State of the City, where you identified more than $2 billion of projects that have come before this great city. I think that that is amazing. I think one day we'll look back at this time and that we'll be talking about these black history milestones. I believe that there is some black history excellence that is taking place right now, and there's an opportunity for more as we continue to shape the community of opportunity. This is the first time that the city has seen something remotely similar to achieving equality through your racial equality initiative. This is the first time that first responders have received pay that is reflective of them being the flagship city in Palm Beach County. I think that's notable. I think it's also notable that Fay Johnson has helped us to navigate through equitable distribution of ARP funds and done so many things that we could not have foreseen happening. I'm looking forward to all of the other great things that we'll see and continue to celebrate, so I just wanted to say congratulations and happy Black History Month.
That's all nice and stuff, and I'm not going to forget. Okay. Commissioner Fox? Oh, yeah. I get to my glass.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start by saying thank you to President Paduzzi and everyone at IBIS for the work that they do, continue to do every year, collecting 33,000 pounds of food is a huge accomplishment. I think right now, we're in the middle of a pandemic, we're two years in, and the people that I know at food banks and pantries are saying this is the hardest time that they've ever had, even since the beginning of the pandemic, because the struggle is still going on for so many that are having a hard time deciding between paying rent and finding food. And so, I'm really appreciative of all the work that you were doing, President Paduzzi, and that, just a reminder to everyone that, you know, if you have time to volunteer or to give some food to one of these places, you know, it's so appreciated. I also wanted to just say a thank you to 211. I know that we made it 211 in Awareness Week, but we didn't really get much of a chance to thank her in person, Patrice Schuter, who was here earlier, and I just wrote down a few of the things that she said, you know, that they're working so closely on suicide hotline and rental assistance and caregiver check-ins and senior check-ins and helping children, and they have a special needs helpline, and I think right now, you know, this is something that is not talked about enough, I think, what the work that they do and that they continue to do 24 hours a day. It's just a huge thank you to them, and just a reminder to people that 211 is out there. If you need this kind of help, they are there and ready to take your call. Then I also just wanted to mention, I know we've talked a little bit about the police chief meetings that they've been having, and I just wanted to give an update that we, the downtown police chief meeting will be, the next one will be held on February 16th at the Community Room at the West Palm Beach PD here on Comata Street, and there will also be one for part of the northwest, which is the 25th Street to Banyan Boulevard. Their next meeting will be on February 23rd in the Community Room at the PD headquarters. And I know I've gotten a few calls from people just asking how they can find this information other than me sending it to them. There's different meetings for all of our different districts, so I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can make this available somewhere, either on our website or something that is just an easier place to find than people contacting us directly, trying to figure out, you know, which zone that they might be in. I know that it is a big topic of conversation, people really interested in hearing from the chief and asking certain questions, so I just wanted to throw it out there, if there was somewhere that we could clue this information so it could be more readily available.
True that. I believe that all public meetings are listed on our website, if I'm not mistaken. So, I would encourage anyone that you have contact with and anyone in the center of my voice to check the list of public meetings there.
I don't believe the police meetings are on our website.
All right.
And I feel like our website is probably a much more readily available place to look than if the police website, or, you know, so...
All right. No, we'll work on seeing what we could do to advertise those community meetings, whether it's the police chief meetings or other meetings that may be going on. So, I'll talk to staff about that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, thanks to everyone who joined us for my State of the City address on last Friday. I was so excited to speak about the many wonderful things that are taking place in our city, but I spoke candidly of some challenges that are ahead. So, if anyone is interested in watching a video of that speech, it is being broadcast on WPB TV, which is Channel 18 on Comcast, or the livestream, which could be accessed through the city's website, wpb.org, and it's also on the city's YouTube page. I encourage everyone to watch and learn about what is going on in our city. Special thanks to the Chamber for hosting this annual event, and while there's a lot of very positive things that we highlighted, none of those could have been done without you, my partners on the dais, working with me in a collaborative effort. So, thank you all for everything that you are doing on behalf of the citizens of the city. The green market has been nominated once again as Best Farmer's Market in the Nation by USA Today, 10 Best. Let's work to retain our title and ensure that our green market remains number one. So, vote for the West Palm Beach Green Market. To vote, visit our website to access the link, that's wpb.org, or visit 10, that's the number, 1-0, best-y dot com. That's 10best.com. Voting is open through the end of this month, February 28th, and a vote for the green market is a vote for West Palm Beach. Registration is underway for spring break camps and other recreational activities. These camps feature wonderful, fun activities for our children when they're out from school in March. Visit the website, wpb.org, for more information. What I also like to announce, and welcome to the city, the city's new Chief Financial Officer, Bridgette Soufrant. Ms. Soufrant will oversee a staff of 32, a general fund budget of over $200 million, and the management of the city's financial operations, including debt issuance, annual financial audit, and accounting functions. Her expansive experience in local government finance operations spans 15 years and includes two other municipalities. So, congratulations and welcome, Bridgette, to the team. She'll be a very, very welcome addition. I did also want to say a quick thank you to Robert Telford, WPB TV's Video Production Manager, and my LGBTQ liaison. For those of you who watch WPB TV, Robert has been the individual making all that TV magic happen for 16 years. Unfortunately for us, fortunate for him, because it's his choice, Robert is leaving us to relocate to the west coast of Florida. We thank him for his many years of service to our residents. While we know Robert is irreplaceable, a search is underway for a successor. So, thank you, Robert, for everything that you do and have done for our city. We wish you the very, very best. All right? So, this meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene as the CRA in 7, at 7:08, two minutes. Let's get it done. Okay.[1789.32]